Okay, we're back in our meeting. I'm going to go ahead and have four actuals. We've got a discussion on our safety bids. And we have those in the number four.
Oh, where is it?
In your packet.
Oh, I thought. I don't have that. Your board packet.
Your board packet, not your folder.
Yeah, but no, I don't have that because I didn't print it.
Oh.
Yeah, just in our blue packet.
Your board packet, not your folder.
Yeah, but no, I don't have that because I didn't print it.
Oh.
Yeah, just in our blue packet.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's finally, it's nice to finally get to meet you all face to face. I think the last time we talked was over the phone about some budget issues. So it's great to be here. The last couple of weeks has actually been pretty interesting for me also in light of your discussion that sounds like you all have had a wonderful couple of weeks too. So I want to go over real quick the bid process. And bear with me because the process that we've gone through actually is affecting the outcome of these bids. I think in your bid packet, there was a bid tabulation form that has all the numbers that we received. So as a part of the bid process, the state of Kansas requires us, or you know, we try to get as many people involved as possible. We actually had this advertised in seven different plan rooms. The state also requires us to put it in the local paper, which was done. And so as a result of that, and part of this process, we did a mandatory three-bid meeting. It was mandatory for all the general contractors. We actually had 12 of them show up, which quite frankly, I was shocked. I was concerned at this size of project, as busy as everybody is currently, I was anticipating three, maybe four. So the fact that we had 12, we were pretty excited about. Those 12, we required them also to submit to us some experience regarding shelter construction. Shelter construction is a little bit different than normal construction. And if you've never done one before, as a contractor, you can get caught on things. And with shelters, safe rooms, the fixes are not easy. So it's better to head off the problems before they get there. With that, 10 of the 12 submitted those qualifications. And so we come up to bid date, the original bid date, and as you know, we actually had to delay it for a week. Now, why is that? We as architects, when we do precast concrete projects, we don't, the design team doesn't detail the nitty-gritty of all the precast stuff. We call that deferred design. But what we do is we come up with a concept of what, you know, our expectations are, how it needs to perform, and then it gets handed off to the precaster, and they actually do the design. They figure out the connections between the panels, they figure out the rebar that's inside the panels, all that kind of stuff. So it's a little bit different than like foundations, which our engineer does design the rebar and decides the foundations and all that. So it's called deferred design. But as a part of our due diligence, what we do is, especially with precast, is we typically will call several precasters to make sure that what we're doing is not out of line. And that, you know, they will bid on it, they don't have a problem producing it in the end. We contacted a firm out of Lincoln, Nebraska, one out of Newton, Kansas, which we consider the local, clear down in Newton, and one out of Oklahoma City. All three of them said, yeah, we can do what you're asking us to do, not a problem. So we get to, close to the original bid date and the local precaster, which, local is important with precast because a large cost of precast is actually shipping it. It's heavy, obviously, there's lots of pieces. So the closer you can get, the better off you are. And that is one of the reasons we get our due diligence with what we deem the local precaster. This precaster sent out a letter, what's called a scope letter, to all the general contractors or some of the general contractors, and said, this is what we're going to bid, which was different than what, you know, what we originally had anticipated. And we saw problems with what they were proposing. So, and this occurred, this occurred like three business days before we bid, okay? So we contacted them, said, hey, what's up? You know, why are you proposing what you are proposing? So, well, we're not comfortable with what you have. And we said, well, wait a second. Back in March, when we really got into the thralls of this, you said you could do it. And now at the 11th hour, you're telling us you can't. So I wasn't very happy at that point. So we had a conversation with them, and come to find out, they were not comfortable with what we had. What they were proposing would not meet code, and would not meet the FEMA requirements that we have to follow. So I found that troubling. Shortly after that phone call, now I'm starting to get phone calls from the general contractors involved, saying, we don't have a precast bid, precaster just backed down. Okay, so what do we do now? So consequently, we called several contractors or several precasters after that. We called the ones in, we called two of them in Kansas City, we called one in Oklahoma City, and we called one in Tulsa. And those are kind of the regional, and of course, we got the local guy in Newton, which now he backed down. So we asked, we called, we went into scramble mode, said, okay, what can we do? So we called three of them, two or four of them. One of them said, we're too busy. The other three said, yeah, we can bid on it, but we're going to need another week. That was the delay, okay? So we're thinking everything's good, right? Bid day comes, we get eight bids, which I was just tickled about. Again, I was concerned we were going to have two or three in the end. So the fact that we had eight of them, man, I'm excited. So part of what we do as architects, representing you all, is that once we get that low bid, you know, the state of Kansas really requires that school districts accept, first of all, you've got to do a public bid, which we did. The second thing is, we've got to have two district representatives there, which granted, Betty were there, followed that. And then once we receive the bids, the state requires you to accept the lowest responsible bid. So as a part of what we do then, is we vet that low bid. We find out, you know, is this a valid bid? Is it a responsible bid? So I called the contractor, the apparent low, which he was out of Manhattan, and I started quizzing, saying, are you going to stand behind your number? And he said, yeah. I asked him several other questions, and I said, you know, what precast number did you use? He goes, why use the local one? I said, what? He said, yeah, he used a preliminary number he got from the local precaster, which backed out on us. So I said, there's a problem here. And so he said, I said, what we need to, what I need to have you do is call the local precaster and find out, in fact, had they had second thoughts, can they do what they told us originally they could do? So we had another meeting with them. And we looked at, we looked at their details that they had sent us, preliminary details. We talked with them further, and really come to find out, the precaster really didn't understand the code, today's code, and the FEMA 361, which being this is a FEMA-funded project, we got to follow. And it was really clear that they really didn't understand what they were doing. So in the end, we determined that that was not a responsible bid. Unfortunately, we liked the number, but if it's not a responsible bid, you know, I don't, on my project, I don't want to have some of the discussions that I heard earlier tonight. It doesn't do us any good to get a contractor involved like that, only to find out that we got all kinds of problems. We're using federally funded money, you don't want problems. So in the end, their bid is not, the low bid is not a valid bid, unfortunately. So with that, I have to recommend that we go to the next bid, that's what the state of Kansas requires. Any questions about that? There was a lot of information there about the process, but I wanted to give you that background so you understood why tonight I'm coming to you and saying, look, we've got to look at the second bid, the first, the low bidder is not a valid bid. In 34 years of practice, I've never had anything happen like this. I don't know if that should make us all feel weird or bad. So, but, you know, I understood, you know, I think the intent of the low bidder, I think his heart was in the right place. He thought the only difference was that, you know, the local precaster was wanting to thicken up the panels by two inches. And we could have dealt with that. I mean, honestly, we could have dealt with that. But he thought that was the only issue. And he said, you know what, we'll widen the footings a little bit to account for that. But what he didn't understand is all the other issues relative for it to follow or beat code and meet the FEMA 361. That's what he didn't understand. So he really, you know, he wasn't standing up saying, I'll pull my bid out. You know, we just determined that he just didn't have a valid bid. So, so anyway, the second one was Weems and Concomy, they're out of Hutchison. They have a vast amount of shelter experience, which we really like to see. The low bidder had submitted three shelters that they had done recently, a couple of in Salina, and I think one in McPherson, if I remember right. So it wasn't that they didn't have the experience, he just didn't understand those finite details. And truly, and I hate the cliche, but truly the devil is in the details of storm shelters. I mean, it truly is. And when I say that, I'm talking, it's down to the screws that hold the hinges on a shelter door. I mean, that's how detailed these things get. And so, and it's everywhere in between. So it's not just a matter of, you know, let's put some strong walls in and throw a couple of strong doors on there and call it good. It just doesn't work that way. So, so anyway, we are recommending to take the second low bid, that is a responsible bid. We've visited with him quite a bit. So, and with that, moving on, and we can talk about the bids, talk about the base bids. We need to talk, we had seven alternates on the project. We'll talk about those. We'll need decisions from the board. Alternates are typically optional. You can select, you can pick and choose, except for one. And we'll talk about that here in a minute, and then unit costs, we'll go over those really quick. So the base bid, the original budget was set by the Kansas Department of Emergency Management through the application process to get that grant fund. Per the grant or the application, they had $765,000 for the construction, $55,000 for fees. Going in, we knew this was going to be tight. We knew it was going to be really tight. There's things that are in these numbers that weren't accounted for. For example, testing was not accounted for, special inspections wasn't accounted for, just a lot of, a lot of those small issues that just were not accounted for. And I think we talked about this, forgive me, I think it was maybe the first of May that we talked, that I called you, talked to you on the phone about the budget, the concerns that I had with it being tight. This project, from what was originally designed, we reduced the scope by about 500 square feet just to make it more efficient, because we knew this was going to be an issue. So still works, don't get me wrong. We can still lay a wrestling mat down flat in there. We've got the support areas that we're required to have, and plus we got the connection to the original building. So, but we did everything we could to try to absolutely minimize the cost on this project, and it was tough. There's just not a lot of fluff in this thing. So back in, back in May, the numbers that we had talked about, and this is very difficult, and as I was putting this together, I'm going, how did I, we're comparing apples to oranges to bananas. So we actually have three ways, and it's pretty difficult to compare one to the other to the other. So, but this was a budget that we had talked about, you know, a total of $847 compared to the $820. Those, and you see the $87,000, we originally started $97,000 approximately for the approximate fees. We did get some numbers on special inspections, and those are significantly less. So I just, just for sake of discussion, I reduced that by $10,000. I think we'll be able to get maybe another $4,000 out of that piece, because I think our special inspections are going to be a lot less than what I anticipated. So, so that's, you know, taking the fees out, we're about $760,000 in construction. Our base bid with the second low bidder was $835. Now, not all is lost. I think there's a silver lining here. If you remember, I, back in May, when I, when we visited about this, if you remember, this is a 75-25 matching grant, and it's 75% of the eligible cost, remember me talking about that. So like the connection is not an eligible cost, because we don't need the connection to protect staff and students. It's really not a part of the shelter. So, and there's things actually in the shelter that aren't, that aren't eligible either. And we were having a hard time getting to the level, I think, I think they had budgeted eligible cost at $615,000. And as I recall, I think we were about at like $572 that I could come up with that was eligible. The fact that we really haven't changed anything, except the number's changing, we ought to be able to get closer to that $615 mark, being able to take advantage of all those monies, where before, I thought we were going to fall about $40,000 short. So there is a positive piece coming out of this number being higher, and that is, we're going to be able to take advantage more of the FEMA grant.
Of the eligible cost.
Of the eligible cost. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, you know, it seems, you know, you look at it and you go, man. But, I mean, the difference, if we can get you to pay 25% of that difference, that's a heck of a lot better than paying all the difference, because FEMA would pick out. And, and I'll give you an example too. I had budgeted, in my numbers, I had budgeted about $66,000 for the connection piece. I talked to Weems and said, what do you think that's worth actually? And he said, I think it's probably in the $30,000 to $35,000 range. So what does that mean? That means we got about another $30,000 that gets pushed over to the eligible part. So that's a really a positive piece. So all is not lost, so bear that in mind. The other thing that I want to do is, I'm going to call the state tomorrow and say, look, we were short to begin with, is there any other, under the same grant, and they, you know, they have these grants, and they have all kinds of them, this is under a particular number, which I don't know what that number is, and I don't know what it covers. But if there's another project out there, under the same grant, that fell short of using everything they could use, we may be able to take advantage of that. So I'm going to call him, we work really close with the state, have for many incidents about 2,000. So, you know, we're going to talk with them and see if there are other monies that we could take advantage of. Any questions on that? Real quick on the alternates, again, we had seven of them. We look at alternates as a way to control cost. It gives you options. You can see what that cost is of that, that particular item. It doesn't get buried in that base bid number. So, and as I mentioned, these are, these are options that you can take, you can say, don't want, with the exception of one, and we'll get to that. So the first alternate was basically to extend the drive. The existing drive cuts right through here. You can, this, this little box right there that you're seeing, that's, that would be the end of the existing drive. This would be basically to extend that so you can tie it back together. Is it necessary? No, you got a pretty good gravel parking lot out there. Is it something you could do in the future if it becomes a problem? Absolutely, not a problem. But we wanted, Kathy asked us, said, hey, let's at least look at it. So it hasn't cost you anything to look at it, you know what it would cost you? For Weems, they got $15,000 ad for that. The sanitary, our alternate number two was a sanitary sewer extension. One of the things that, we have the original drawings, and one of the things that happens is the sewer comes in right at this point, and it extends up, comes down this corridor, and there's a restroom right inside that door right there. And there's a cleanout in that corridor right there. They give me every single invert elevation, except what this one is up here. So the engineer came out, he tried to get the cap off of it, he couldn't get the cap off of it. So what we said was, as a part of the base bid, we're going to assume, we've got the two restrooms here, we're going to assume we can get into that sewer line right there, and then that's, that's our, that's our sanitary sewer. Now, obviously, sanitary sewer is all gravity, so it has to have slope on it, right? When they come out of the bottom of the toilet, they've got to have a certain amount of distance, you know, from the floor to make that turn, then they can go and start their slope. What we don't know is, you know, when we do, when we figure out what this is, is it low enough that we can get into it? So we rolled the dice and said, we're going to make that a part of the base bid. If that can't happen, then we've got to basically come out around and tie in to the sewer outside. I didn't want you to have to pay for that if it wasn't necessary. So with that, that's the one alternate that we may not have a choice. I mean, it just may be, what's there, we got to deal with that, our fingers are crossed, you know, we hope we can get there, it'll be by far cheaper. But you can see, that was about a $7, $7,500 ad for that. Makes sense? So again, trying to, trying to watch out for your dollars, you know, hope for the best, and then if it doesn't work out, then we'll have to accept that. One of the first things the contractor will do is get out there and let's get that popped open and measure that to see where we're at. And then we can, we can determine fairly quickly if we're going to have to go that direction or not. So, questions on that? The third alternate was actually to sandblast the exterior of the new concrete, precast concrete panels to match the existing. That's a photograph of your existing, it's kind of hard to see, but you can see this just not as slicked off like what you'd see on a concrete floor. It's got texture to it, they basically sandblasted it to give it that texture. So we did that as an alternate to let you choose, do you want that to match up, or is that something, you know, cost-wise, we just can't afford to do? However, it just so happens to be, if you look at Weems' number, it's a no change. What happens with that is, I think they use the precasters out of Oklahoma City, they said that those panels are not leaving this plant without being sandblasted. So it's already rolled in. What their concern is, is that it can look splotchy, and they aren't willing to send those out looking that way. So they just said, that's a part of our base bid number. So that's a no change. Alternate number four was a storefront window. On part of the building, over the classrooms, I believe it is, you kind of have this step motif that you see up on the outer walls, on the corners. We were kind of mimicking that, just to get more light into that corridor also. But that, it all kind of snowballed on us in that, they actually had, had structural framing, foundations associated with this, and now we get a bid at $10,000. One of those that I don't think it's worth it, honestly. I had anticipated that that was probably going to be maybe a $2,000 ad, not a $10,000 ad, so that's one that I wouldn't recommend that you do it, quite frankly. I like it, I think it helps tie in with the existing building, but it's not worth $10,000 to do it, in my opinion. Alternate number five, the base bid, we used what's called an insulated lightweight concrete system. Our roof consists of the precast double Ts, which is the structure. We put a four-inch concrete slab on top of it, and then the insulated lightweight system went over that. The advantage of the lightweight system is that we can get a roof down on that fairly, in about a week. If we go over, directly over the concrete with insulation, it may be a three to four week delay, because we got to let that concrete hydrate before we can stick the insulation down to it. So it costs us a little bit of time, I don't think it's going to affect the end date at all. And for whatever reason, the bids, we had a $26,000 swing from low to high on this number. I have no idea why. I thought it was a pretty simple thing, but boy, you can see across the board, they weren't looking at the same thing, for whatever reason. So with that, going with just tapered polyisoe rigid, it's a rigid that already has a taper in it, that's, and it's, it's an $8,000 savings, that's kind of a no-brainer to me. I did talk with the contractor, I said, now, you understand that that's probably going to add three weeks on to what you can do? He goes, yeah, he's fully aware of it. So with the schedule with this project, I'm not real concerned at this point. The delay is going to be getting the precast, but when the precast shows up, that building, that shelter will be up in about two days. So don't blink. It'll be, you won't, it won't be there one day, and it's going to be up the next, or the next couple of days, so. But it takes time. We have to get the drawing, what we call shop drawings, which is the actual drawings that we get from the precaster, so they have to design it, they have to document it. So, they have to design it, they have to document it, they have to send it to us. We evaluate it, the engineer evaluates it, makes any changes that need to occur. So, that's just a process. It just takes time with that. So, so I'm, I'm not concerned about time. I'm not concerned about, you know, another three weeks on this piece of it at all. So, you know, I think that one is a no-brainer, honestly. Alternate number six. Anymore these days in schools, we don't put a lot of HVAC out in corridors. Mechanical engineers have a tendency to use the corridors as return air. So, we just don't see, you know, pumping air into corridors much anymore. However, I was a little bit concerned that, you know, we could, there may be times where, you know, we got the west sun beating on that, that we could get some temperature raising up. Now, the existing doors, the outside doors, were actually taking the inside doors off. No reason to have them anymore. The outside doors, the current outside doors, we're leaving them in place, but they're gonna be on hole opens. So, what it gives you the opportunity to do is, if you wanna open this portion of the building up, for whatever reason, you can secure the rest of the building, just by leaving that set of doors. So, my point is, is that the existing corridor is, for, for the most part, is gonna be open to this corridor. So, you're gonna get some air moving between the two. It's kind of a crapshoot, honestly. There may be some days that just aren't very comfortable. We do have heat. We have a couple of units out here, they're just radiant-type heats, heating units. So, we're taking care of the winter time, but it's, you know, it's the cool, what we consider the cooling days, or when you have the air conditioner on, that we're a little bit concerned about. But again, it, it's up to you all. That was about a fifty-six hundred dollar ad for that.
Do you take into account if that was full of people?
If the corridor was full of people, yeah. If they were full of people, we wouldn't anticipate they would be there for very long. You know, usually corridors, and that's why we don't, is usually corridors people are moving through them. They may stop, you know, for a short period of time, but for the most part, they're gonna move through it.
Well, this is only a system just for the corridor?
It's just the corridor, yeah. In the wrestling room, we have, we have a system in the wrestling room. Yeah, that's taken care of. It's just that, that corridor piece. So, yeah, the wrestling room is, that's taken care of. We have to leave that piece, so, yeah, that's a good question, actually. Now, I do wanna tell you that we love to tie in that system in to your, to the, the control system that you have. We talked to a contractor that was familiar with it, and he said, don't do it. He said, these systems today, you know, they'd have their own computers onboard, and as soon as you start tying third-party stuff to it, it can get really ugly. So, what we have is, we have a programmable thermostat that's controlling that unit. So, you can set it to do whatever you want it to do all year long, but it is separate from the rest of your system. He said, that, that contractor said, if we were to do that, he said, it would be extremely expensive. So, we chose just to keep it separate for the sake of cost, 'cause we knew going in, cost was gonna be tight, so. And finally, the, the alternate number seven was putting vinyl composition tile down on the floor. All the floors in there currently are sealed concrete. So, you know, our finishes are, you know, as far as the floor goes, you're getting bare concrete. It'll be sealed, but it's concrete. So, this, you know, we felt like, and, and in the wrestling room, we're looking at it, that, you know, ninety percent of that's covered with a mat. Probably for ninety-five percent or ninety-seven percent of the time. So, it doesn't make sense to put tile underneath that. So, but again, with costs being as tight as they are, we kept everything as concrete, but thought, if you wanted to add anything, that might be a good place to add tile that could match the, the tile on the rest of the building. Is it necessary to do today? Absolutely not. Is that something you can do in the future? Absolutely. You don't have to do it right now. So, and that was a twenty-six hundred dollar ad. Any questions on that? Real quick on the unit costs. Unit costs we deal with for the unforeseen conditions. If you look at, at, and it's really intended to make sure that if we do run into something, there's a method to get it paid for, and you know what that is, right up front. We don't use unit costs very often, but sometimes you, you run into it. What we don't want, and, and actually, it saves the district money, 'cause if you think about, three of the unit, three of the four unit costs that we deal with are, are relative to unsuitable soil. Something that nobody can see at this point. You know, we had a geotechnical report then, that drilled two six-inch holes. So, all we're getting is a snapshot of two locations of a six-inch hole. Generally speaking, that's okay, but you always run into these spots that you may have a five-by-five square of, of clay that we didn't know that was there. Borings didn't show us it was there. May have been dumped there from when they built the original building. We, you run into stuff like that. And so, instead of having the contractor guess what he may run into, and having you all pay for it, it's kind of a, you know, pay as you use. And so, that's what unit costs are about. You know, we use, anything that comes up like that, we would write a change order, and that's how we would deal with it. Again, it's kind of roll the dice. You don't know whether you're gonna run into it or not. Again, the first, the first four are just about unsuitable soil. We do these on about every single, the exact same ones on about every single project I do. And again, it's, it's about protecting you all, so you don't end up with a guy that says, oh, I gotta take out this five-by-five by foot of soil, and I'm gonna really gig him on it. That's what this keeps for now, so.
Just out of curiosity, what did this morning show you as far as suitability? Because I think if you looked at the high school, you'll see that it has a high clay content, 'cause there's a lot of shrink and slope and cracks that are in the building.
And there are. And we do have some treatment that we're gonna be doing because of that. It did show some high, not, not extreme plastic, what we call plasticity, but yeah, there, there could be some potential movement. We actually, the other thing it showed us was your groundwater is pretty shallow, and...
That was gonna be my next question, would you have...
One of the things that we did was, you know how in your house, if you have a basement, how you have drain tile around the perimeter? We actually put that on the inside. So, that way, if we have any water that would happen to perk up underneath the building, it's got a way to get out. And it's, and that's, you know, it, it appears that that water table is seasonal, but obviously, we've had a wet year this year. I'm anticipating it's, it's probably up. I think the way, our, our building pad, the way that slopes off to the north, we're building up enough that our foundations on the north side of the building, or, I'm sorry, on the south side of the building, really are, are never gonna get, you know, down to a level that's gonna be a problem. It's gonna be more on the north end, where it slopes off. We've gotta put our foundations down deeper because of that. So, but that's how, you know, it's cheap insurance. Nothing worse. Now, I cannot guarantee you that we're not gonna have some minor cracking. You know, the, the three rules of concrete is, it's gonna crack, it's gonna crack, and it's gonna crack. So, we, we obviously put control joints in to try to control where those are, but it's gonna crack. So, the geotech report did say to expect maybe some minor, more like what we call spider web cracking, where it really doesn't open up, but you can see the crack. So, but we, we've tried to, we've tried to, in your best interest, put in those measures to make sure that we minimize the potential problems for you, so. The one, this unit cost, unit cost number four is, is for a sealer. A concrete sealer underneath the, if you happen to take the vinyl comp, vinyl, vinyl cop tile, if you take that alternate, this comes into play. Back in the, back in the mid-nineties, the EPA did us all a great big favor and took VOCs out of the flooring adhesives, and everybody at that point in time started having problems with flooring, not sticky, whether it was carpet or tile. And what was discovered was that if your concrete, you know, it hydrates, and it almost hydrates all its line, and so it's putting off moisture. Well, it'll pick up salts and, and acids in the concrete. Will dissolve, that, that moisture will dissolve that in the concrete, and as it comes up, it deposits, it deposits those salt and those acids on top of the concrete. Very thin layer, and I'm talking moisture that you'll never see. But it does that. And what, what happens is, is it deposits that acid on the concrete where the adhesive is. The adhesives aren't worth a darn anymore, because they took the solvents out, and they found out that that, those salts and the acids ate up that adhesive. So, how do we combat that? And we, and many, many lawsuits over that whole issue. Why does the water keep coming up? We have no idea. I've, I've seen slabs that were poured, and a month later, they're fine. I actually worked on a, a school in Wichita that we remodeled, that the slab had been down for forty-five years. We tested it, and it was too wet. So, go figure. And the problem is, nobody knows why it's doing this. Nobody can answer it. We know what the problem is, but we don't know why it's doing it. So, what happens with this sealer is, it basically seals off the top of the concrete, so the vapor can't come up through it. Hence, if the vapor's not coming up through, it's not depositing that acid, it's not a problem. That's the way we solve it. Now, do we know we're gonna have a problem with that, that concrete when we get there? Have no idea. That's why we have it as a unit cost. But just be aware that, if, and I did a calculation on that, just be aware, if you accept that alternate and our concrete is too wet, then instead of that being a twenty-six hundred dollar cost, it could be up to like, an additional thousand thirty-five. I just took the area, I took the times that unit cost. So, it may not be a twenty-six hundred dollar ad. It, it may end up being a thirty-seven hundred dollar ad in the end. But we won't know until we get there. So, that's why we do it as a unit cost. I don't wanna put that in the bid for them to go, okay, I gotta figure that in. They charge you for it, and then it never happens. You'll never get that money back, so. Any questions? I know that's really quick. You know, in summary, I, I hate it that this, the bid situation come about as it did. I don't necessarily believe it's anybody's fault. If I had to blame anybody, it'd be the local precaster. We probably would have done something maybe a little bit different. I don't know that they could have produced it still, 'cause they just weren't aware of, of the COVID quarantine, so. But I think the contractor, the second contractor, I'm, I'm very comfortable with, we did a project in Hillsborough, for the Hillsborough School District, about a year, year and a half ago with them. Nasty little job, putting in a, a platform lift in an old nineteen-twenty-three building. We have the drawings, but there was a lot of unforeseen conditions, and they just dealt with it. So, we were very happy to have them onboard. So, they've been around a long time. You know, we're comfortable with them, and again, they got a lot of shelter experience, so. So, with that, what, what, in the end, what I need from you all is, you know, are we a go on this, on the base bid? And then, you know, alternates, what alternates you want to take, if any of them? And just remember that sewer extension one. You know, that's the one we kinda gotta keep in our back pocket until we, till we find out.
So, Dr. Betty, where are we on the dollars?
Well, what I understood, really, what I understood was, pretty sure, with the original cost consideration, it's going to be seven hundred fifty to seven hundred sixty thousand. Is that what you remember, Betty, too?
The in-con donation that we can help with, some of that, those who aren't making payments, we can track them.
Okay, well, it's seven hundred sixty thousand, the in-con for the dollar, that extra cost, right. I, I was not aware of the in-con cost. Seventy-five to twenty-five. The fees of grant?
It's imagining seventy-five to twenty-five grand on eligible items. I, I always wanna point that out, because I, it's, and we talked about that in May, how that's kind of a misnomer, and I really hate it that the state doesn't make sure that you're fully understand that, 'cause it is complicated. I, don't get me wrong. I've just done enough of them, that I, I really understand that. And I see district after district that don't understand that, they're not made clear with that, and consequently, they, when we get there, there's a, there's a letdown, because they, now all of a sudden, it's, well, you know, it's not quite what we thought it was gonna be.
Well, I was gonna say, I have a question, because this has been a part of our conversations. Can you explain the changes in the work? How that works if it's in the whole work?
Yes. We typically will, and, and Betty's talking about, there's a, there's a couple of rows there about percentages. Obviously, a contractor's in business to make money, plus they got overhead costs that they have to deal with. The reason we ask for this, again, is so that if we end up with a change, some surprise, something that we didn't account on, and there has to be a change order, we know exactly what they're gonna charge you over and above what the actual cost is. So, they can't turn around and say, you know, we get to the, toward the end of the job, and gosh, they're behind, they're not making the money they thought they were going to. Here's this change that pops up, and oh, guess what? They're gonna charge you two hundred percent. This keeps them from doing that. So, that's why we list that. So, we have, we have changes that are by the general contractor, that's the first one. You have changes that a sub may do, and obviously, the, the general has to deal with that sub change. So, they're gonna, they're gonna mark that up. And then the final one is, what are they gonna give you back? If there's monies, you know, something we take out, for whatever reason. We take something out, reduction in cost, what are they gonna give you back on that overhead profit? And you can see, those numbers vary wildly. Some say, look, I had to, and I don't know what Sid, add, add zero on the return. The way a lot of them look at it is, look, I had to spend the time and effort to first of all, bid it, and secondly, I had to figure out what the cost was to take it out. So, those are all overhead costs that he has to deal with to get you those monies back. So, that's why, and I'm not making any excuses for them, that's just the way that they look at it. Some of them look at it differently, as you can see, than others. So, you know, but it's a way to make sure that you all, the district doesn't get gigged on a change. That's, that's really why we put those in there. Does that make sense? So, it's, it's truly trying to protect the district on, on any, any change that may come around.
There's a, there's a precast... There's a, there's a Precast company, their slab, do they do any kind of this kind of work?
I think the, maybe out of Azariah. Yeah. They, they, Azariah is kind of a sister plant of Prestress that's in Newton. Azariah does what we call hollow core slabs. It, it's a flat slab that has open cores running the length of it.
We have some, yeah.
There you go. So that's typically what they make. Unfortunately, those don't work in a tornado shelter.
Yours are different?
Yeah, yeah. So, plus our spans are, are too big to be able to utilize that type of system. So the double Ts that we have, 32 makes it deep, it's a clear span. This thing is beefy. They're, they're just, but the loads are incredible. I tell people, I give, you know, an example of like a 3070 door in a 250 mile an hour wind. The wind alone will put about two and a half tons of pressure on that single door. On a 10 foot, 10 by 10 panel on the wall, it's about 13 tons of pressure, just the wind in a 200, that's how much, that isn't the type of loads that we're talking about. I mean, they're absolutely incredible. And so that's why, and a Precast works well. I mean, it's, one of the things that's good about Precast is, you know, we gotta worry about these things being lifted up, blown away. So what do you do? How do you, how do you resist that? With mass. You got dead weight that keeps that from blowing away. So Precast works really well for that, just for its sheer weight, works really well.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
If you don't know exactly, or you don't know the consequences of how the load increases or decreases with the bidding. So if there were a question about delaying this decision for a month, is that, is that a possibility or does?
It could be, I, you know, in the, in the bid documents, we require them to hold their bid for 45 days. So we would be right there. I did talk to Sid, and again, questioning, vetting out his, his bid also. I said, why if the board, thinking that, well, maybe, you know, maybe they want to put that decision off for a month. He did express concern. And part of that is just the time that it takes to get the Precast. And you can't order the Precast until we have a, until we have a contract. So I, I think you could.
Do we have to pick the alternate things tonight?
Uh, you wouldn't necessarily. You know, what we want to do is include, honestly, we want to include those in the contract so we can get that rolling. I think there's, I think you have the obvious ones. You have the one that's a no change.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. You have the one that's a reduction, that, those are no brainers.
Right. And then with $7,500, so to me, it looks like for $500 ahead, if we take alternates two, three, and five.
Two, three.
Yeah. The $7,500 and the other one's $8,000.
Yeah.
And three is a no change. No loss, you know, so.
Yeah. I mean, that's, but we may not need, we may not need to accept number two. That's the line that we gotta hold in our pocket. And I think we could, and, and that what we will do on that is, well, we would put it in the contract that said, you know, this is a placeholder for this. If we need it, we're gonna do that via change order. Yeah, the D-Deck one, I mean, that's, it is a no brainer. I'd take it.
Oh, I thought it was the other way.
I thought it cost it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry. I thought that was the cost. Well, I can't, yeah, I just couldn't read, okay.
Yeah.
That's why I was right.
I can talk to Sid and see if he would be willing to hold on the alternates if that was an issue. You know, obviously, I got a.
We can all agree on that tonight.
Yeah. And I think there's always a possibility. You know, like the tile, for example. If you came back and, you know, we said in December, hey, we didn't take that back in August, but now we would, we'd like to take that alternate. You know, what we'd have to do is give him an opportunity to go look back and see if his sub would, would hold that price. It may cost you a little bit more, but that cost is just coming from buying time, so.
And we might be able to decide tonight, I just didn't know what to add.
Yeah, no, you know, at this point, really, anything is fair game. I mean, you, if you walked away from it, the contractor doesn't know, you don't know the contract or anything, so.
Final, Chris, must be final down hallway, I'm just asking. It's been all red mixed with that blue color, is that correct?
No, not the red hallway.
No.
Yeah.
And then it's that piece together, we have pieces that we replace the tile for it or not.
Yeah.
From a maintenance standpoint, in your opinion, I foresee this, that the corner would be useful a lot for, you know, Kids Federation and things coming in from that. From a maintenance standpoint, keeping it clean, bare concrete would be easier than having to maintain a tiled floor?
You know, it's, it's interesting that you say that. We are seeing, there's been a trend in schools to go into what we call polished concrete.
Right.
And it's for that very reason, they, their school districts are just having tremendous amount of maintenance problems with VCT these days. The VCT, you know, when I started in this business, VCT was a pretty good material. But as time has gone on, they've put more and more fillers in it to cheapen it up. And the tile that we have today is nothing like what we had 20 years ago. And so consequently, you get a little grain of sand underneath it, it telegraphs that through, they go and run a buffer on it, and I end up with a burn spot like that just from a grain of sand being underneath there. So now, I would say, you know, and we're not, we haven't polished the concrete on this. Polished concrete is not cheap. It's about 10 bucks a square foot versus VCT where you're talking maybe 2 bucks a square foot, two, three. So, but the sealed concrete, there's nothing, really nothing wrong with it. I mean, it's been around forever. It, it, you know, if a moppel or even a dry, you know, you just gotta keep the dust off is really what you gotta do. Now, if you have foot traffic that carries in a lot of rocks and stuff like that, it will scratch you in the concrete. So you may have to run a buffer on it, once in a while you may have to reseal. So it's not foolproof, but, but it, yeah, we're, we're seeing a trend absolutely going away from buying composition.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. So, discussion, so. Are there alternates? Any discussion on those? Alternates, if you want to. No, I think if we. Now, I understand that the roof is a savings, that's the alternative. I'm gonna put the roof, the, the, the no cost to the Precast finish and the sewer and we don't need AC tile or window. Just give it asphalt.
So two, three, and five?
That's it, for me. That was easier than that. Anybody else?
Amy?
Yeah, one, two, asphalt, yeah.
He did asphalt.
That could be tied into the walking path.
Or next owner provides money to the Precast.
Anyone interested in that, we're all good. Yeah, Precast. All right. Great.
Thanks, Tori.
Thank you very much. Okay. So now we.
Number one was.
Okay, all right, so now we're gonna go back up to the KSPD policy update.
I wrote mine. There are some policies that Mrs. Walter recommended that be included in the discussion. She did say that there was a certain two and three. And so Robert is giving the letters of those. She said approval, C, B, A. C, M. C, M. C, N, A. E, E, E. G, A, A. G, A, C. G, A, C, C. G, A, B. G, A, R. G, V, H. G, V, R. G, V, R. I, F, C, N, I, T, I, I.
I, C.
Okay. I love that one. I can, I, C, I, J. I must have fallen.
Did I get it?
Do I even have to give it that, you gave it or bad? Okay. I have no idea what happened to it.
I set one on my phone.
I, F, C, I, J.
I, R, C, D, R, two, I, R, C, just sit down. To approve an I, J, she said to me.
I, C, I, J.
I, F, C, I, J. J, B, C, this discussion. So the one she suggested for discussion, G, A, A, D, no, G, A, A, A. G, A, A, B. G, A, C, C, A. G, A, C, E. G, A, H, B. G, A, O. All right. E. G, A, O, B. G, V, R, H. And J, B, C.
G, U, G.
C, C, this two.
G, A, C, A.
Two, one.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I got all, all the words right. Yes.
Then it's right here.
Okay, so that's all one.
Yeah. No, no, it's two several ones.
No. All right, are there any discussions on those? That we're ready to approve? Okay, all right. Moving on, 2019, 2020, preschool routes? Yes, I saw that.
Okay, this is real. Last year, you had a few enough preschoolers that the district quit hiring the drivers to take a van and car seats and give children a, to get a class. Well, this year, you see Debbie Sprout, the top page that says East of Cleveland Out. It looks like at this point, the kids that you thought were in the morning would be riding, they were going to have two seats, that's good news. If you clip it and look at the south looking around, it appears we will have six stops and seven students, which you cannot fit car seats or booster chairs on a vehicle other than a D S bus. Okay, the contact in D S bus, it will be about $8,500 for the year for one bus. Last year, it was about half that. So if we had two buses, it would be $7,000. Last year, it cost us about $8,500, about half that to run two small vehicles, which means it would be about $4,250 so dollars. So to do what we need to do to transport kids to a preschool program, we need to have one of the S bus. And if we can find a driver, we can do the smaller about.
Sprout would just, yeah.
With just a, like, turnover service, or something like this, with the car seats that we have. And there's another. If they're going from, we can put them down to just.
Going down to the interstate.
Just beyond them. And this is, they might bring them to school both these routes. They might bring them to school, let them, and then they ride the regular bus.
So this is just a one way.
So it's just a one way route. So there are two pieces of it. The cost is more expensive to run a bus and you have to find somebody willing to be a bus driver and do what needs to be done for the second half of this.
So you are, what did the driving monster do?
The two people have said they do not want to drive the ship. So they're not an option.
Okay, I didn't mean to do that.
I can't tell you who to do, but I just know.
Oh, it's fine, I didn't know. Okay, sorry, that, I said my, I make a retard. Like, with the vans and stuff, okay? And then on the other side.
Good luck.
Dennis said, there's a man who I tried to call one night about work stuff and I thought he would be open to visiting KIC, so I know he's not gonna be able to do that, he's still in his school.
Yeah.
So he's not.
Yeah.
In my history, I don't think he's not having a problem.
It'd be perfect.
I know.
Okay.
Well, we need to figure out a way to get them down here on all.
So we, we had a solution, you know, lower the cost and make action. I know we want that and we don't talk, I should say. The next part, Mrs. Walter, I don't know if you had any better figures in the moment that you saw in your school, whether that thirty grounds would be.
I, it's hard to say because it depends on how many more kids go out. So I don't, I don't know.
So you know that has been on the table each time I've been with you.
I think it's more than. We're gonna not have, I can read it, can you decide tonight? Now, what do you want to land it to? Yes. What, the first slide is a, it's cost effective for one or two kids. So we're gonna have to go through the preschool. Express we're starting now. Any other discussion?
So like, agree if I have some action on it.
I just, I saw, I saw, maybe you were gonna say something.
We could offer a budget.
Yes. And there was.
Yeah.
Do we have this? Buster?
Oh, just, yeah, at most, probably. Four or five. Um, minimum, at third, sometimes it was just one. I mean, just depending on the night and who was riding or who needed a ride. Mostly junior high kids, not very many high school kids.
Moving on? Classified handbook.
And that is to look at. The minutes. It's complicated to register, but I can go through all the options. So we have. There are a lot of things that you can do there. So can you grab? If you have anything that you wanted to discuss in that, these questions back.
I had a question, I was thinking, um, so that it's a thing that you might have. So. Your plan, that it. Because they get everything. Okay. Okay, I didn't, I didn't know that. Okay.
It's a good question.
See another policy, do you under the dress code? And I'm only four bucks. I guess maybe during the fine one, during the. Not saying you have issues, I mean, just.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sure, apples and apples.
Any general? Something like that.
Good?
Good.
Alright. I have a picture done, so how about sending to here, come here for Elliot?
I know you're a lot to Elliot to do that we could put the issue. You're offering nearly six thousand dollars that certification that we spent on. And our request was for five. And we would have to go on to thirty four because it was a forty thousand dollar project.
How did they decide what you?
We, we, uh, the expectation that this is what you get. And we weren't the only district that had, but even if you look at it, right, if you pay out. I can't even tell how they believe that to the end of that.
Yeah.
Same as.
Yeah, looking through this, I'm trying. What I did, she's trying to do that. Yeah, I mean, there is.
I, I think, I think we should just ask for this here, try and get around the time so that we can take action. This is fantastic, I can give you my.
Well, we're.
We have to take action, so I can.
And say thank you, but not.
And if there is, it's like.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we're ready for action, I then, um, actually, I am on K A S P policy updates.
Do you have S P policy? G C A. C M. C N. S A. Not T A. C N A. E E E E. G A A. G A C. G A C B. Excuse me. G A C C. G A E. G A G. G V H. G V M. G V R B. I F C. I J. And with the elders, as Mrs. Walter said, we have, we have a discussion, a session. We have those and see.
I move.
So.
Thank you for reading all of it. Do I have to read those all again?
No.
No? Motion by Deborah, sending my warning to approve, message to not approve the proposed K S P policy, policy update, as Dr. Summers read. Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor? Six oh. Action on twenty nineteen, twenty twenty preschool routes?
Would be on recommendation that you approve us working up a contract with K S plus four, one route, South. And then post vacancy for the best route for the small route.
I like the motion for one, Dr. Summers, this is. Thank you, Rhonda and Gina, a motion by Rhonda White, submitted by Gina Eckhart, the U S D two ninety eight Board of Education approves the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty preschool routes. The S bus one. And we've also had for post vacancy for the bus driver for the east route. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Say aye, raise your hand. Six oh. Okay. Action on activity routes?
I make the motion that we do not offer the activity route for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
It's been moved by Monica, sent by a day ago, that U S D two ninety eight Board of Education not offer the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty activity routes. Any discussion?
It's not that I don't think it's a worthy cause, but the number of children that we've been blessing.
Who just can afford it.
Yes. The luxury, I don't think we can afford this one.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, six oh. Okay, action on classified handbook?
Again, we would ask that you would bring the two thousand, nineteen, twenty, U S D two ninety eight classified handbook. I'm sorry, that's Dr. Summers stated.
Thanks. Thank you, Rhonda. Moved by Gina, sent by Rhonda, that U S D two ninety eight Board of Education approved the classified handbook as, as presented for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Six oh. Okay, action on the safe room bids. For you, Schultz.
Do we need to accept that bid number two? Is that what we do?
That's the recommendation.
With weeds. With weeds construction. And we want to include alternates two, three, and five, is that what we want to do?
If you make that motion.
You make Nana's motion? She's right.
Two and five. Yes.
You make Gina's motion, okay. You just see my motion, right? Yes, okay, I said that.
Okay. And then the amount, I wasn't sure I had it anymore.
Was gonna say, I want to prove the amount of the.
Yes, and the amount was, you know, she, can you help me with that?
I can.
Yes, it's the best thing in thirty five, but then you're greatest.
The cost of the alternates?
Alternates two, three, and five.
Exactly. So that's.
So the amount is eight.
Eight hundred thirty five thousand. And then alternate two is right here, is.
Seventy five hundred.
Alternate three was no cost, and alternate five.
Incredible.
Is a reduction of eight thousand. Thank you.
Okay.
So then it'd be.
Eight hundred thirty four thousand five hundred.
So do we amend the motion to add that?
Just say the alternate numbers.
Actually, there'd be five hundred less than that.
Eight, eight thousand three hundred, four thousand five hundred.
Well, we have to wait to see what the.
Yeah, we don't. So I would just say the alternates two, three, five.
Okay. Alright, so that was your motion?
This is me.
Sorry.
No, no, that's good.
Second?
That was me.
Did you say to Gina? Alright, I thought you went to the wrong spot. Alright, so a motion by Gina, sent by Gina, that U S D two ninety eight Board of Education approved the bid for weeds construction. And amount of eight hundred thirty five thousand dollars for the construction of the safe room at, oh, eight hundred thirty thousand dollars. Plus alternate two, three, and five, um, for construction of the safe room at the Lincoln Junior Senior High School. Any discussion?
We have money to pay for, right?
We have, with the peanut grant, and we will work on making sure we can make that work.
Oh, you have to do that money?
You do?
Alright, all in favor? Six oh.
Thank goodness, that's good.
Alright. Yeah. Alright, action on construction updates? In that one.
Okay, that would be to accept the change order from. Streets. And I included a new package, but did not discuss it, but we have, at this point in time, it's something. I'll put it down below, the change order for the windows and the cafeteria and the cattle barn, and additional ten thousand dollars. So, if you need. That's your decision to make. I was, I was surprised when I walked around when I first came, that they were not included. And I misunderstood and thought that the air conditioning and heating was also not included. So I was pleasantly surprised later to find out, and your maintenance person. Took me on a little tour and showed me where the heating is workplace, in the room where the new walk-in freezer will go when it gets here. And the air conditioning units are outside on the north side of the building easily seen, so the building will be as comfortable as the rest of the building. It's just, those windows weren't included. And again, I talked with.
Sorry, I just said, how was that? You missed it? Yeah.
I talked with Dennis that you probably will want to figure out a way to take out those old window, air conditioning units. And I, even just a piece of wood would look better, I think, than those, those old units if you.
Once you get final enrollment to know what the budget's gonna be, it may be something that.
Okay, so maybe you want to table that.
I would suggest that.
Just to set the change order with the E P M reductions.
This one, adjust the E P M reduction. So it's the change order for the minus sixty four thousand five hundred.
I believe you would be saving about, you know, five pounds here.
That we're gonna probably need to pay for.
One day.
And the eight thousand dollars for the preschool route. Yeah, where I, my calculation, we're still not ahead of the game.
Well, it's still a district term to make, right?
No. We gotta have some to spend. We're about to go broke. If I can just reach this change order for you.
I think you're right to say the streets. So the streets, excuse me. Which are the change order for the street.
And then where?
Construct the street.
And then we're gonna, yeah.
With the E P M, showing the E P M reduction.
And then that's one we'll approve, pay the E P M. Okay, then that's this.
It only six.
Okay, so is that even here that you? Not too long.
So there's a second part to this, that we need to approve. The second pay order application that he's already been getting, the doctor's week, including the forty two thousand two hundred seventy dollars and ninety five cents.
Does that mean you have to set an action by?
Okay, so we need to start by.
Accept you the change.
The change order from street plumbing that reduces it by the sixty four thousand five hundred dollars removal of the E P M.
Okay. And now I have to. Eight hundred sixty four thousand eight hundred seventy dollars in the street.
And that can't be on this, because he didn't have the change order when he set this for the payment, and they need the payment to pay their bills.
Yeah. So we have to approve this, and then we'll have to approve that, the progress bill. Okay, good. So.
I move that we accept, pay whatever, the potential change, the change orders for street plumbing, which is reduced from nine hundred twenty nine, three seventy, by the sixty four thousand five hundred. For the E P M people, down to eight hundred sixty four thousand eight hundred seventy dollars.
So we're supposed to say, yes. Yes, just the right, white numbers down. Thank you, Gina.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Gina, sent by Rhonda, that the U S D two ninety eight Board of Education approved the change order for street, R R street plumbing, showing the reduction for the E P M from nine hundred twenty nine thousand three hundred seventy dollars to eight hundred sixty four thousand eight hundred seventy dollars. Any discussion? Alrights. All in favor? Six oh. Now we need to have a motion to approve the pay order for three hundred forty four thousand two hundred seventy three dollars and ninety pi cents to R R street plumbing for the works that they finished. Even? You can't do it.
I'm gonna wait until you want to.
Your second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by David Bell, sent by Gina Eckhart, to approve the pay order for R R street plumbing for three hundred forty four thousand two hundred thirty seven dollars and ninety five cents. All in favor? All opposed?
I'll vote.
Okay, I didn't see your question yet. Alright, sorry, you six though? Okay. Alright, next, we have action on E P M inwards.
It suggests that we pay. The seventy thousand four hundred seventy two dollars and fifty cents on the E P M. Cross out. Contract that's a service.
I'll second it.
Plus paying the additional three hundred five dollars and sixteen cents for the high school.
Yes. I must be sleeping, I don't know.
You're doing a lot, right?
Okay, alright, so motion by Monica, sent by Deb, that U S D two ninety eight Board of Education approved a seventeen thousand four hundred seventy dollars fifty cents on the E P M service agreements, plus an additional bill of three hundred five dollars and sixteen cents for separate work at the Lincoln Junior Senior. at the Lincoln Junior Senior High School. Any discussion? All in favor? Six oh, thank you. Action on a safe and secure school rent for L E S.
I would ask that you, please, you're still, you're still applying to accept the funding issue. Thank you for considering. I saw what you said.
Motion by Deb, seconded by David, USC two ninety-eight, the law is due content to modify the states, appreciate their money, but we are going to return it for the safe and secure grants for Lincoln Junior Junior High School. Any discussion? All in favor? Six oh. Action on substitute teacher list, amendment number six. I'm making a motion to approve the substitute list as presented. Rhonda?
I'll say it.
We have a motion by Rhonda, seconded by Gina, that USC two ninety-eight Board of Education approved the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty-two teacher list as presented in the bid number six. Any discussion? All in favor? Action on the budgets. Then it.
Make a motion, we approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, USD two ninety-eight.
Do you mind?
I'll say it.
Gina? And motion by Marty, seconded by Gina, to, that USC two ninety-eight approved the education, Board of Education, sorry, approved the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, USD two ninety-eight budget as proposed. Any discussion? All in favor? We added the last two here, point of foster care, point of contact represented by Dr. Benny Summers. And move the point of Dr. Benny Summers, the foster care point of contact. It's been moved by Deb, seconded by Marty, USC two ninety-eight Board of Education approved appointing Dr. Benny Summers, foster care point of contact represented for USC two ninety-eight Lincoln for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Six oh. Action on out of district students.
I have a request, that's, and, and, to accept two students from Tescan School, and to go down to school this way. She's similar to Dana, so I'm afraid, and, uh, twenty-similes, unless she's, she's a pedro, pedro. And I've, I've talked to the principal at Tescan, and I've talked with Mrs. Shum, and she had a clear limitation, and I'll see. And we have documented her program, actual, this is, and, if you're like. The students will take it to their areas, lives in their, and, uh, they will be able to option that as we, to, 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 to.
I saw that.
She's honest, but sorry.
David, and moved by Marty, seconded by David, the USC two ninety-eight Board of Education approved the request for out of district students, one fourth grade student, two kindergarten students, submitted last Friday, agree. Any discussion? All in favor? Six oh. So the executive session for negotiation. You fine?
Okay.
I'm gonna have that. Yeah, five. I don't, I'm tired. All right, so that's, uh, you have a motion, I move the, uh, 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 move the executive session for five minutes.
Uh, it's not, uh, yes.
With, we can, like, your. Okay. So, now to you. All right, motion by Deb, seconded by, the USC two ninety-eight Board of Education, going to executive session at ten oh two, and for five minutes, superintendent, the purpose of discussing latest proposal, and the board of education committee meeting at ten oh seven. And the board of education conference, going to executive session, is required to protect the district's position under common exception, on the session. All in favor? Six oh.